Good afternoon. This meeting will now come to order. Hello, I'm Bob Lord, President of the Board of Education, and I'd like to welcome you to the August 8, 2018 Board Meeting. In keeping with the Board's commitment to open communication with the community, this meeting is being streamed live on CCPS website at www.CarrollK12.org and broadcast live on Channel 21. We're also recording this meeting so that it can access on demand on our website and broadcast throughout the month on Channel 21. We'd like to remind you that because this is a live broadcast, anyone who participates in this meeting needs to use a microphone. Later in the meeting, time will be provided for the citizens to address the Board regarding topics on the agenda or other items of concern, except for items relating to personnel. Persons wishing to address the Board should fill out a blue card located on the table near the entrance to this room and pass it to the Superintendent or the Board President prior to the conclusion of the scheduled citizen participation. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance followed by a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with ever and ever justice for
Please be seated. So Board Members, I need a motion for the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Harrison.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rothschild. Board Members, are there any questions, additions, or changes to the agenda? If not, I call for the vote. All those in favor of approval of the agenda passes unanimously. Thank you. So I need a motion for the approval of the minutes. Let's break these out for the Board Meeting Minutes for July 11, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Zivigney.
Second.
Second by Ms. Harrison. Board Members, are there any changes, additions? Ms. Rothschild.
On page four, the second paragraph, it says Board Members are in agreement that one of the options they would like presented to them is to fund only the addition to the Career and Technology Center as a standalone option. I think we also need to add in and that all of the options must stay within the allotted $60 million budget. I think the Board was very clear that we wanted options to come back within the $60 million budget.
I support that. Didn't we, we also state that there would be a minimum of three? I believe.
I think we were told there would be a minimum of three.
Okay. Board Members, any other changes, additions?
Just on the same topic on page three, it says this, at the very bottom, it says this bid is the next step in the path toward construction of the Career and Technology Center. I just think, I'd like to make a minor correction to that because that sounds like we're building a brand-new building. So if we could say maybe something like toward a construction project for the Career and Technology Center.
Board Members, any other additions? No? So all those in favor of approving the minutes as amended? That's unanimously. Moving on to the unapproved Board Meeting Minutes for August 1, 2018. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Rothschild.
Second.
Second by Ms. Harrison. Board Members, any changes, additions? Ms. Zivigney.
I would just like to state that Ms. Herbert was not present. It says that we voted unanimously approved. I think we should make a statement that she was not here.
She was absent.
So it was a four-zero vote.
Ms. Rothschild.
Marcia is listed as Ms. Marcia Howard, and she is not married to Doug. So at the absent, we should change her last name to Herbert.
Can't do that to her while she's not here.
No, that would not be fair.
Okay. Any other changes or additions to the Board Meeting, I mean to Work Session Minutes? No? So all those in favor of the Board Meeting Minutes for August 1 as amended? That's unanimously. Moving on to the unapproved Work Session Meeting Minutes for the Strategic Plan again on August 1. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Zivigney.
Second.
Second by Ms. Rothschild. Are there any changes? So we didn't change Ms. Herbert's name again?
No.
Okay. So Board Members, all those in favor of approval of the Work Session Meeting Minutes for August 1? That's unanimously. So moving on to Board Member Activities and Correspondence. Who'd like to start? No? No? Ms. Rothschild.
All right. This is in relation to my other job, but it was valuable to me as a Board Member. I attended in July a conference at the Center for Transformative Teaching and Learning, and it was a week-long conference on mind-brain education and being a research-informed educator. And it was incredible. It was so great. So I had my teacher hat on, but I also, you know, I was speaking with Assistant Superintendents and thinking about things at the higher-up levels, so that was really valuable. And then I had the greatest experience today. I met with new Principal Michael Brown. He is the new Principal at Winters Mill High School. It was amazing to meet with him. He's going to do such a great job at Winters Mill, and I am so excited for his equity initiatives and his diversity initiatives, and I think he's going to be a really great asset to this school system.
Anybody else? No? So anybody who knows my family and I, we, my children are really involved, and their schedule is busier than ours. So my daughter and I, we are members of the Community Media Center, and we were requested to go out to Union Bridge and film something. And Community Media Center, again, is one of our partners. That, it was the dream big Union Bridge event out there. It was their one-year anniversary. They had a big celebration. In fact, Commissioner Weaver was, came out, you know, to Union Bridge to help them celebrate. That was really good. My son participated in Camp Cops, which is a partnership with our Sheriff's Department as well as all the law enforcement agencies. He enjoys that. He's going to be a cop. My daughter was, you know, was a camp counselor at Musical Theater Camp with the Parks and Rec, and that was held at the, what was our community? No, 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 no. Sorry.
The Art Center?
The Art Center, yes. It was a two-week course, and so I got to sit in and watch what the end result was. They gave a play. Also, my son was over at the Career and Tech Center, participated in Master Home Cooks, made some really great meals that the whole family got to enjoy. They do an incredible job there, working with our students, helping them to learn how to cook. Of course, went to the 4H Fair and last night bounced around Westminster National Nightout. That was always a lot of fun. And that's about it. So, Dr. Lockard.
Thank you, President Lord. Okay, good evening, everybody. I'd like to share a few of the outstanding accomplishments of our school system staff and students over the past several weeks, even though it's summertime, there's always a lot going on. First of all, congratulations to the Carroll County Career and Technology Center for another outstanding performance at the Annual Skills USA National Championships. Students from Carroll brought home gold medals in Graphic Communication and Promotional Bulletin Board, silver medals in Cosmetology, Diesel Equipment and Television Production, and a bronze medal in Digital Cinema Production. Congratulations to all those students and to the Career and Technology Center. Three of our educators received awards from the Maryland Agricultural Teachers Association. As the state winners from Maryland, they are now eligible for national-level awards. Angie McCoslin, Supervisor of Career and Technology Education, received the Advocate Award for her outstanding contributions to agricultural education and her advocacy for the agriculture program in Carroll County. Bridgette Nicholson, Agri-science Teacher at Manchester Valley High School, received the Teacher Mentor Award for the guidance and support she provided to a new agri-science teacher at Francis Scott Key High School. And Diane Safar, Agri-science Teacher at Winters Mill High School, received the Outstanding Teacher Award for her high-quality agriculture education program, leadership, and professional activities. She also received the Ag Mechanics Professional Award for outstanding accomplishments within her area of expertise. In addition, Diane received the Teacher of Teachers Award. That's, that's a, Teacher of Teachers Award for having a former student become an agri-science teacher and was presented with an award for 20 years of service. Wow. All of those folks, congratulations. Meredith Day, a fifth-grade student at Mechanicsville Elementary School, placed first in her age group in the Maryland Regional Braille Challenge Competition. She then went on to participate in the National Braille Challenge Competition at USC, the University of Southern California, where she competed in spelling, proofreading, reading comprehension, and reading charts and graphs. Congratulations, Meredith. Finally, I'd like to thank the DART Foundation for their generous grant of $4,800 to Manchester Elementary School. I was on hand at Manchester just a couple of weeks ago to talk with folks from the DART Foundation and staff from the school. We're excited that the funds will support STEM initiatives at the school and will be used to procure supplies and equipment that will enhance our existing curriculum and provide extra and co-curricular opportunities for students. And I'd also like to say we welcome back all of our student athletes today. I was with all of our coaches last evening, Mr. Dulch, for a training, an annual training that's provided to all of our coaches. We want to thank all of those folks who serve in different roles, whether it's a coach, a volunteer, a staff member, athletic directors, administrators, volunteers, everybody who helps to participate to make our program for students and our student-athletes such a big success. So, thank you.
That's where we go. I got to meet Meredith Day at our Special Education Awards Ceremony. I was quite impressed. She's very enthusiastic. So, but moving on, I need a motion for the approval of personal action items.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Rothschild.
Second.
Second by Ms. Zivigney. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, Board Members, I have a series of personnel action items for your approval, including, these are in your agenda items, 41 new hires, two releases from contract, two promotions, three leaves of absence, and 10 increases. Just a few minutes, we'll have Ms. Baptiste provide a summary of our hiring efforts for the school, for the new school year, but that is the first piece in terms of the approval of personnel action items.
Okay, so I need a motion for the approval of appointments. Board Members.
Where do you motion?
Motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So I'm going to keep moving.
Please.
Board Members, I have two Assistant Principal appointments for your approval that I'm recommending. These will conclude the formation of our A&amp;S teams for the new school year, so we're very excited to be fully staffed there. And we're happy to recommend Lauren Murray to the Assistant Principal position at Robert Moton Elementary School, one of the Assistant Principal positions at Robert Moton, and Cindy Taylor to the Assistant Principal position at William Winchester.
So Board Members, any other discussion? Okay, so I call for the vote. All those in favor of approval of the personal action items as well as the appointments. Unanimous. Thank you. Moving on to the Human Resources Staffing Update.
Ms. Baptiste.
Good evening, Dr. Lockard and Board Members. Before you this afternoon, just to give you a brief overview of our staffing, where we are currently for summer, it has been a very busy summer. We have 88 new educators that are hired for the 18-19 school year. This will also include our, we have an additional 13 that were hired in the latter part of 17-18, so we have a total coming in for our new teacher orientation of 101 educators, and we have 45 support staff that have been hired over the summer season. So it's been a very busy summer for our HR department, and when I come back to you in October, we will give you details in regards to those individuals, in regards to their education and backgrounds. Do you have any questions for me?
Ms. Rothschild.
So are we good with hiring?
So, so we have eight additional openings.
Okay.
The good part is none of them are speech-language pathologists.
Okay.
That's a good thing. The only one that we are a little sensitive is the area of chemistry. We have one chemistry opening at the high school level.
Okay.
And we have six at elementary and one Spanish.
Are there candidates that are in the pool that would meet those requirements?
There are candidates in the pool. We're in the review process right now. It's just that, is that, we get later to the end of the date in screening process. Some of those candidates have already been selected within other positions within our county and with other systems throughout the state.
How many?
But we will definitely have a qualified chemistry candidate in that, in that room.
Well, that's important. How many support staff did you say?
Forty-five.
Forty-five. Thank you. Board Members, any other questions?
Just thank you always. I know we're all relaxing by the pool, and I know HR Department is working very hard this summer, so thank you for all of your work.
Ms. Kelly Keefe is probably upstairs presenting additional offers as a key.
Thank you.
Thank you, Sandra. So moving on, I need a motion for the approval of the cassette agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Harrison.
Second.
Second by Ms. Zivigney. First item is the Award of Bids.
Okay, Board Members, there are five recommended bid award items in your packet we are bringing you this evening. We'll take questions and comments on all of those or any of those at this time.
Ms. Zivigney.
I can just start with the first one, I guess, with the Angel Track System and the school bus camera systems. There is no dollar amount shown here, so I'm not sure what the expected cost is, and I'm not sure I understand, it says that this is part of a five-year camera system replacement plan, so is this like a year in that five-year schedule and we're just rolling that through? Or how, could you help me?
Yes, this is the, this is the first year. We will have subsequent requests the next five years to upgrade all of the buses with the new camera system. The approximate cost is $150,000. I think the actual cost was $149,999 in some cents.
Is that for one year?
It's for one year, yes.
So it's $150,000 for each of the next five years?
Approximately, yes.
Okay. And has that, has that been part of the budgeting process?
Yes, it has.
Okay.
Any other questions, Board Members? Well, I do. I have, so I'm reading this about the Wi-Fi connectivity. Now, from what I understand, does this mean that staff will no longer have to get on the bus to remove the physical hard drive?
Well, that would be ideal if we had a bus in the vicinity of Wi-Fi that could stay there long enough to retrieve the necessary footage within, you know, the camera recording. Most times, our staff, school staff, is searching through several hours of recordings to try and find the incident that we're looking for. However, if an incident were pinpointed to a specific time and place on the recording, then we could certainly use the Wi-Fi capability. We also, if Wi-Fi were on buses, we have the ability to actually watch live video of the bus itself with this system. That's not the plan at present, but that would be possible.
Another question that, it states that the, there'll be an interior forward-facing camera that will assist in accident fly-by incident. Does the system now have a forward-facing?
We do not. We, most buses have either a three- or four-camera system that, one is aimed at the bus door over the driver's head, and the other two or three are interior cameras to watch the students in the seats. This system is a six-camera capability system. So the plan right now is to have five interior cameras, one of which will be pointed out of the front window, which will be very helpful in accident investigation and also helpful, hopefully, to catch possible fly-by violators. The sixth camera could be used as an external camera specifically for fly-by violators once we have appropriate technology that we feel could support that.
So it's a big improvement over what we have.
Exactly.
So with, I do have another question on that with the fly-by incidents, is those, can they be prosecuted simply on what's recorded on a video?
There has been evidence across the country where that has met with some success, some, some systems better than others, but technology is improving all the time, and when we feel it's appropriate in terms of the support that we can get with the technology, then we would be moving with the Sheriff's Office to try and get that implemented here in Carroll. There are several pilot programs throughout the state currently, and we're waiting for a little better data on those pilots.
Ms. Rothschild.
I just wanted to clarify, you said, yes, this is current, this has already been accounted for in your budget?
Yes.
For this year and the next few years?
Yes.
Is that in, it's in operating? It's not in the CIP?
Correct.
It's in operating?
It's in operating.
Board Members, any other questions for Mr. Hurdisty? Thank you.
Thank you.
Happy birthday, by the way. Moving on to, is that the only item you want to discuss, or are there any items within?
I had a couple of more questions, but not on that item.
Okay, move on to the next one. The trash can liner, any other questions on that?
Because Mr. Lord is forbidden to ask questions about the trash can liner.
I am forbidden. I did get that information before the meeting. Medical plan vendor?
I did have a question on the medical plan vendor. It says in here that we have included a guarantee that the administrative fees would not increase for the three years and only a 3% increase for the fourth and fifth years. And even though this is, this appears to be an initial one-year period, did we need to provide any commitment in order to lock in those rates and guarantees for the other four years?
Good evening, Board Members and Dr. Lockard. I'm Stephanie Rowan from the Department of Human Resources. The way purchasing is always structured, these bids, we award one year at a time for a maximum of a five-year period, but usually the vendor is asked in these guarantees to provide a guarantee for the four, for the full five-year period, although we have the option at any point to get out if we want. So if we're unhappy or we find, we decide to go out to bid and find a better offer, we can terminate our contract as long as we provide a 90-day notice, so.
Okay.
But yes, that is now in a guarantee, it will be issued in a guaranteed letter on upon award of the bid.
That's a good negotiation, a one-way guarantee.
We like that.
Okay, so moving on to the prescription drug plan. Any questions from Board Members? Go ahead.
So the 20% reduction, that's, that's awesome.
Yeah.
And I was wondering if that ties to the prescription rebates?
Yes.
If that, if that's what's driving that, that reduction in cost?
Yes, we're in a more aggressive rebate program. It was actually, the consultant had recommend we bid this benefit more frequently because the pricing changes so frequently from vendor to vendor, and they felt we should do this earlier than the five years, although we have the option to go five years. But yes, a lot of it is rebate, some of it is a reduced ingredient cost. What they do is take our actual drugs dispensed and they model it with each vendor to see the pricing, and sometimes pricing changes from year to year, and the drugs you're being dispensed become generic, so that affects your ingredient cost. So that's been a big positive for us. We had a lot of large quantity dispensing that has now turned generic, which is a savings for us, so.
So I guess with the question, so when Superintendent Guthrie was here, he was saying that it took a while to get credible information on the prescription rebates, and that's why we weren't having it flow through?
Correct.
The budget, but this, I guess, is recognition?
Yes.
By the carrier now that we've got credible experience and they're letting that flow through their pricing?
Yes.
So we would still expect to be getting prescription rebates?
We are getting them on an ongoing basis right now, so.
Okay.
But this bid will almost double what we're going to be getting.
Okay. Okay.
Great.
Some of the manufacturers are driving very aggressive rebates, so that has changed since the last rebate guarantee we had three years ago.
That's good news because we helped adjust our budget with the rebate last time.
Yeah. Well, a lot of this offsets the increase in claims you have naturally because of, well, we do have an aging population and, you know, more retirees, and that affects your costs. And medical and drug claims go up, so we're hoping to stem some of those increases.
Okay.
Other questions?
Moving on, I think.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you. Moving on to the insulation and walk-in refrigerator and freezer at Westminster Elementary School. Any comments, discussion, questions? Nope. So with all that said, I call for the vote on the recommended Award of Bids. All those in favor, passed unanimously. Moving on to the approval of the budget transfer of the FY18 CIP budget. I need a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Zivigney.
Second.
Second by Ms. Harrison. Dr. Lockard.
Thank you, Mr. Lord. Because of some of the work at the Sandy Mount HVAC system prior to July 1, we need to account for payment in FY18, so the budget transfer you have before you hear in the agenda item outlines how those funds would be allocated to accomplish that. We do have staff available. If there are any questions.
Ms. Rothschild.
So essentially, this isn't a change in any funding thing, it's basically an accounting adjustment, right?
That's exactly what it is. Mr. Hartle calls that an accounting treatment.
An accounting treatment?
Accounting treatment, and it's, this is a capital transfer as opposed to the operating tra, or the fund balance transfer you dealt with last month, but it's a similar premise. After you awarded the bid in?
February, March?
To the contractor for the Sandy Mount HVAC project, we sat down with, or they sat down with them and talked about timeline and progress, and it was suggested to us that if we could order some equipment that also requires some manufacturing early enough, we could get finished sooner and actually between this and the roof finish in two years instead of three, but the accounting needs to have, be reflected in fiscal year 18 for everything before July 1. In the grand scheme of your capital budget, all of the money would be the same, the net effect is zero at the end of the day.
Thank you.
Thank you. So any other discussion on this item? So I call for the vote. All those in favor of approval of the budget transfer?
Can we do Francis Scott Key? Can we talk about that one?
Can we talk about Francis Scott Key?
Well, they're just, it's just adjusting the funding. It's just switching it around.
Okay.
Okay. So I call for the vote. All those in favor of approval, passed unanimously. Moving on to the school construction report.
Okay, Board Members, as we do every month, we've attached for you a school construction report that provides updates on the projects currently being administered by our construction department, so that report is here for you for any questions, comments at this time.
Actually, I do. And Mr. Marx could probably answer this for me.
He was already getting up before I even said that.
Yeah, I saw him moving in his seat. So concerning the Sandy Mount Elementary School project, apparently this report was written before all this was done, because it does state that things will be online August 6, which was this week.
For the office.
So has things all been completed?
Yes, they're moved in the office.
Okay. Everything's online?
Yes. Well, for the office, that was, for that part, right. We were anxious to get them. They were in a temporary part of the building while we were renovating their spaces, and then we moved them back this week. And as a side project, I believe maintenance had also a carpet replacement in there that we took care of also. So they're back and air-conditioned in their space.
In their space.
Now we're working on getting the chiller going and getting the other spaces conditioned too. I believe the gym and the cafeteria are also conditioned right now.
So, but they do truly expect to have this all done before school?
Yes, and it, just as you all discussed with the transfer, that this is part of the big plan to help this along, so.
Okay. Well, thank you. That's all the questions I had. Anybody else? No? Okay. So moving on to the?
I have a question.
Oh, Ms. Harrison.
For the, the portable, the removal of the portable, how many more do we have left to remove?
In terms of building numbers or classrooms?
The classroom, I'm assuming it's.
It's, it, because I believe the number of buildings was around the low twenties, 23, 24, so it puts us in that 50 range of classrooms. So it puts us in that 50 range of classrooms. Most of them are doubles, double-sized classrooms. We only have a couple quads left in the system. And some of them are lab singles, so it's just one large single.
Okay, thank you.
No problem. The, on the, just a note while we're talking about that, the contractor has not started yet. They were supposed to start this week with the demolitions. They, through the rains of the summer, they were having problems with their other projects and slowing down. So unfortunately, the demo contractor's father just passed away Saturday, and it's only a two-man show. So he'll, he'll be here probably next week. We'll make sure we stay out of everybody's way.
Stay-
We have the athletics starting up and everything, so we'll, we'll make sure we stay out of everybody's way.
But they expect to have that done before school starts off, right?
Yes.
Thank you. Before he sits down, anybody else?
I'm actually busy.
Just pray for dry weather. The wet weather's tough with the roofing jobs right now. Just so as a warning, so everybody knows, we will be done with our hot work by the time school starts. We always have some metal work to do after school starts, okay? We do those in the evenings and weekends, and we stay out of everybody's way. So we're on track, but we just hope that it doesn't keep raining till the end of the summer.
I think we've had enough rain.
Yes.
Thank you.
So moving on to the Safe to Learn Act implementation report. Dr. Lockard.
Okay, board members, beginning with this meeting, as Ed signaled, we have added a monthly administrative report that will provide to you as an update on our progress toward implementation of the Safe to Learn Act of 2018. As you know, a little bit later this evening, we have discussion around the SRO MOU. But the new law does have many different components that we are beginning work on that will require time and resources. And so we are bringing to you a new report designed to touch on all those major components of, of the law and what's required, what, what our status is, and eventually what the staff and fiscal impact may be to our system. So we have various staff here to answer questions you might have, including Mr. Williams, Ms. Dolch, Ms. Muniz, and Mr. O'Neil. We tried to set that up, I think it's in a pretty user-friendly fashion where you can see each of the different provisions and where we are in terms of implementation status.
Board members, Ms. Savigny.
I appreciate that we'll be getting this every month, and, and I do just want to say, I also see how this ties to the strategic plan document, right? We have the, the implementation of this in pillar four. So I'd just like to make sure that we point out wherever, wherever we tie to the strategic plan, I think that's a good thing to kind of keep in mind. I did have a couple of questions on the updates, and I really do appreciate the detail that was provided here. Under the school safety assessment teams, the, the first question I had was, it says the identification of an intervention with students who may pose a threat. I, I'm trying to get my arms around what that really means. That almost sounds like profiling or, I, I'm trying to understand how we would do that.
Well, good evening, board members, Dr. Lockard. I, I think really the, the spirit of the law is, is looking at the totality of circumstances. So students that are displaying a lot of warning signs and so forth, when we, when we have a student who possibly may, or makes a threat, or is exhibiting some risky behavior, what I believe the intent of the law and the spirit of this law is to take a collaborative approach to those types of things. It's not about profiling, it's not about looking at one specific circumstance and just saying, oh, this is a, a major problem. But it's, it really, I believe that what Maryland is trying to do is follow a Virginia model, to take a look at all the aspects of what's going on with a student, and bringing a lot of different people in from a lot of different angles when necessary, not, it's not, it never, it doesn't always reach that point, and evaluating if there are some additional supports that need to be in place. I know the goal of this law, or the intent of this law is really to, to try to get supports in place to make students successful, get them the help that they need, not to take students and lock them up and throw away the key. We want these students to be successful, we want to intervene when appropriate, and, and, you know, probably will be very successful with this collaborative approach. And Ed, I don't, I don't want to throw you on the spot, but, you know, there's a lot of words in this law that leave some questions out there. So we would love to have some clarity on some of those things, but I think that some of those might be visited in the upcoming year.
Well, that's right. As Mr. Williams says, there's, there's some uncertainties, but at the same time, the Maryland Center for School Safety is working towards the development of a model policy, which will be disseminated sometime after the September 1, 2018 goal for that policy. And I think that that model policy will, we hope, provide a lot of the clarification to some questions that are raised. But I, I think as Mr. Williams indicated, there, there is a huge collaborative effort statewide on this new law. And everybody is working together in an effort to meet the guides, the guidelines, the deadlines, and, and really have everything in place for the coming year and the year after.
And it's worth mentioning, we, we do have several staff members serving on various committees, work groups within, that are working on a lot of the tenants of this law. Dana Falls specifically is working on a, a subcommittee or a work group around the mental health piece, and I, I can say that they've been very thankful to have him with his knowledge of the law and that revolves around these types of things, student discipline and so forth.
I, I have a question concerning the aggressive timeline specifically about the model policy being developed by September 1st. Is that realistic? I know Mr. Falls isn't here to answer that, but-
Right. I know that they've been having a lot of meetings. And, and so they are, I believe they, they are intent on meeting those, those timelines. I can't answer for Director Clark, and I certainly, I haven't, Dana's on vacation this week, so I didn't have a chance to discuss this with him. But I know that they've been having a lot of meetings, working towards meeting this deadline. It's, it's way up there on the priority list for what they want to tackle with, with, with this Safe to Learn Act. So it's in the forefront.
Okay. Thank you.
I have a question for Dwayne while he's up here. Under the SRO training and curriculum, will everyone, will the SROs in our county be trained prior to starting in our schools this year?
So the curriculum was presented and was adopted, or at least the information we could receive back from Ed Clark was accepted by the Maryland Police Training Standards Commission. And yes, so some of the SROs that, that would be involved in, in the new Safe Schools Unit have already attended NASRO training, which is a national standard. Maryland is going to exceed what those standards are. They don't want to just settle for those standards. They want to have some add-on classes in addition to what NASRO offers to meet the Maryland standard. So eventually, there will be classes offered within the state that are just a complete class. And I, I think Ed can talk a little bit more to that, because Ed teaches a module that specifically when it talks about what the principal's authority is and, and the role of interviewing students, detaining students, things of that nature.
Right. I've been doing SRO training at the Maryland Correctional, Police and Correctional Training Center for a number of years, and I usually do it about two times a year. I did it on June, and I did it again on Tuesday. And there were representatives from the Carroll County Sheriff's Department at the training the other day. My unit is on community policing in the schools. And so we cover the COMAR provisions in 13A.08, where there's that requirement for coordination between the SRO and the principal or the assistant principal. When can police question students? What is the requirement for the principal when the officer asks permission to question the student? What's the requirement for a search of a student? What's the requirement for school officials? What's the requirement for law enforcement officials? How do we keep those two distinctions separate and apart so that we're dealing with student discipline, they're dealing with law enforcement? And then we discuss arrests, we discuss FERPA, what information about a child can be shared with an officer, what information about a child cannot be shared with an officer? We cover the whole thing. And that's just one of the modules that is covered in that, that program. So it was good to see people from Carroll County at that training on Tuesday.
But Mr. Williams, you, so not everyone then will be required to have taken the NASRO training prior to being in our schools? So there's a potential for some of our SROs not to have taken either of the trainings?
So I can tell you that those who have been selected for the unit have undergone the NASRO training, or attended the NASRO training and successfully completed it.
Okay.
There, because of staffing issues and backfilling issues at the Sheriff's Office, they will not be able, able to permanently assign someone to the unit for every single school.
Sure.
So those schools will be covered on an overtime basis, much like they did, the Sheriff's Office did following the Parkland shooting. And so those that are working in the schools on an overtime basis might, or might not have that training. And the reason I say that is, is that more than just the three that were selected recently have received that training.
Mm-hmm.
I think that it's important to also just kind of keep in mind that, that officers have been in our schools for years, they've been interacting with our students for years. We've had DARE programs, we've had a lot of different programs, and we've had the Adopt a School program for years where officers have come, stopped in the office, walked around, they've been responding, and we've had an excellent relationship with the Sheriff's Office throughout that. And we have any, any type of concern, and, and if there was any, it was extremely minor in my tenure here since 2015, has been easily resolved. And, and so I, I can't stand up here and tell you that every single person that's going to be in that school on any given day will have that training, because that's unrealistic, because we will have officers respond to elementary schools that have not, have not attended NASRO training. But we expect them to still function under the law, and they understand that. And we expect them to still heed to the authority of the school administrator, as is written into the law. So that's, you know, that's one of the things that, that will always be in existence unless we have an SRO assigned to every single school in the, in the county.
Okay. I feel a little bit uncomfortable having SROs specifically, they're going to be assigned to schools on a permanent basis that have yet to take the training.
So, so if I can bring a little bit of clarity to that, they're not going to be, those that are backfilling on the overtime basis, they will not be assigned on a permanent, permanent basis. It will be a rotational basis. So much like what occurred in February, March, April, May, June, those, those deputies will sign up and they will work that detail for a day, maybe two days in a row, and then there might be a different deputy in the school on a different day. So I, I'd be glad answering questions about exactly what your concern might be on that-
Well, I mean, if, if we think that the training is valuable for our SROs, need to have these trainings in order to be effective at doing their job in a school?
Right.
Then it seems like they should have the training to do the job in the schools.
I understand what you're saying about people who aren't necessarily the full-time SROs.
And I, to me, that's no different than, than what we've been doing for years and years. I guess what I'm saying is, the people who are full-time SROs?
Yes.
Are going to have the training?
Yes, ma'am.
Before they start in our schools as SROs.
Yes, ma'am. With, there could be a couple add-on modules that the Maryland Center for School Safety comes out with as we move forward, that they still might have to attend.
Right.
But they, they have received training, that is correct.
Okay.
Ms. Savigny?
Oh. Evan? Okay, well, I'm changing topics a little bit to the-
Sure.
Under the school emergency drills section of the report, the Safe to Learn Act states that active shooter preparedness shall be incorporated into existing emergency drills. And under the implementation status section, it states that those would be the lockdown drills. Students have been wondering if the two lockdowns would be changed to better fit the active shooter situation. So rather than the, the shelter in place, would they be adapted to the run, hide, and defend?
So actually, we do follow the run, hide, and defend, so it's avoid, deny, defend, run, hide, fight. There's nothing new, as I said today, my train under the sun when it comes to this. Everybody puts their own little acronym to it. So we follow avoid, deny, defend. And, and so that does allow for self-evacuation. So that's at the discretion of the, the teacher who is in charge of that class at the time, and they have received training in that. We do want to try to expand that training out more to the students. I think that's important. And the, the other thing to keep in mind is that the law still wants some, what they consider to be age-appropriate active shooter response drills. They, there, there's, there needs to be more clarity brought to that. Right now, we feel that we're fulfilling those, those requirements as best we can by performing lockdown drills, as we've always interpreted them as an internal threat or an active assailant-type response. So you're right on with what you're saying. It's just a matter of, I think a lot of people just feel more comfortable locking down. It's easier, right?
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
That's an excellent question, Mr. Warren. Ms. Savigny?
Just had a question under the, the school safety evaluations. It says there's debate over combining standard security evaluations with school culture assessment. And it seems like there's, that, that seems very vague, and maybe mixing apples and oranges with school safety and, and school culture assessment.
Well, I won't disagree with you on that, because I'm one of the ones involved in that, that debate, or I was involved in the last debate at the meeting. So currently, we, we, I do a security assessment at every school building each summer. And that's a physical security assessment I assess. I also talk to them about whether they're following protocols on down the line. I don't want to take up too much of your time, but it's a standard security assessment that's done at the schools. The challenge is, is that there is a big push to measure school culture, as far as bullying, the students feel, feeling of safety and so forth. I personally feel that that should be done in an anonymous survey-type fashion. I believe it would be very difficult for me to get a real feel for how a school culture is by interviewing half a dozen people at a school, especially when they're not anonymous. So I'm one of those in the camp that believes that they should be separate. But there is a little bit of debate amongst those who are working on this. I think we'll be fine in the end, but we have to get, you know, we, we're just taking this one step at a time. And, and I'm not alone in that concern about combining the two.
Okay. Thank you. I did have one other question, and it's back on the, the SRO. And I know that we're going to be discussing this later as part of the, the MOU, but it was noted in both of those places, which is why I bring it up now, but the note in here that says, it was noted in the fiscal and policy note of the Safe to Learn Act that the Carroll County would need a total of 26 dedicated deputies to meet the adequate coverage requirement. And I have to admit that, that, that statement jumps off the page at me. I'm trying to understand, we know there's a lot of, they haven't defined yet what adequate coverage means, and I'd like to understand how they could make an, who made this assessment? How could they make that sort of assessment if they don't even know what adequate coverage really means? And I'd like to understand whether we think, I, I believe we thought that our coverage has been adequate all along through Adopt a School. So I think that we're potentially setting unreasonable expectations or defining the situation unrealistically.
So just a tad bit of legislative history. What became this law initially started as three separate bills. One bill was essentially to require every school in, every public school in Maryland to have an SRO assigned to it. That eventually became what you see in this law, modified, amended. And so when the Department of Legislative Services, which is the organization that does that analysis, looked at the law as rewritten or as amended into one big law and said, okay, what does that mean? And when you hear Ed Clark from Center of School Safety make public presentations at the State Board and other places and say, the law doesn't require an SRO in every school, that's less in reaction to Carroll County, which is the only school system in Maryland today who doesn't have an, an existing SRO program, and more in reaction to other school systems that do have an SRO program but don't have an SRO assigned to every single school. And this is a generalization, but- And this is a generalization, but generally, systems that have had an SRO program for many years have typically an SRO per high school, sometimes per high school and nearby middle school, but maybe generally one per high school. And then other SROs that maybe do a middle school and a couple of feeder elementary schools, or schools that are arranged to make sense geographically. So there's not a one-to-one ratio, but every school has coverage. They're assigned that way. So then when you look at us, there's really no way to equate us and what adequate coverage would mean for us to kind of that model. And so the amendments that took place were very carefully constructed so that a place like Baltimore County that has hundreds of schools or even other larger systems don't have to suddenly have all of these new SROs to fill every single school one-to-one, they would have adequate coverage under the model that they're working under. In our case, we had none. We had police act, you know, police engagement and police coverage, Adopt a School and other things, but we didn't have this more formalized program. So when DLS looked at us, they said, okay, we'll apply basically that model that exists elsewhere here. In year one, one deputy per high school, and then in year two, they used roughly, I think, one per two or three, I don't know if you remember.
Right, they used the clustering kind of formula.
But I think it was one per two or three schools and came up with the FTE total of 26. And they're applying that existing model to a place that has never had that model, and that's how they arrived at that. And the county got close to that number, I think, over a two-year phase in. Twenty-four? Twenty. So they're very close to that, and the sheriff would have to figure out with resources how to apply that coverage. I'll say this because I don't know that Dwayne would. I don't know that you're, I would, I would highly doubt that we will get a legal definition of adequate coverage out of NCSS or the State Board or anybody else. You'll do the annual reports that are required, and you'll get feedback on how they feel about your coverage pattern through that process. But that's what that, that's what that policy fiscal note relates to, I think.
So the 26 wasn't meant to be an additional number of deputies that's needed. It was meant to be, that's how many it would take. You have, I mean, we do have a police presence in our schools, so clearly, it's not.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six. I mean, we do have some coverage and the roles and responsibilities. So the Adopt a School, I don't know how.
True, but I do think they meant kind of full-time during the school day. Not one-to-one, but I'm in that coverage region for these two or three schools during the hours of school. The sheriff doesn't have that capacity now. He has to patrol roads, he has to patrol all corners of the county, he has to leave to respond to whatever or not go to the school because of whatever's happening. The intent of this law is to have that coverage during the school days, during the hours of school. And so I don't, I don't want to speak too much for the sheriff, but I don't know how he would pull that off without the additional resources. And I think that's what DLS was getting at.
I have, Ms. Ross, try.
I actually don't have any more questions for you, Dwayne. I have a different question. In the mental health part, we're talking about, it says each LEA must designate a mental health services coordinator. And we are simply taking our supervisor of school psychologists and supervisor of school counselors and giving them that job. So are these additional duties for them in a role that I'm sure they're not, I know they're busy in their current roles?
Yes. So we're fortunate that the governor, the governor, I believe, has just released money, and we've applied for a grant to have what we're going to call a mental health coordinator. Probably will be a school psychologist whose duties will be to fulfill this law. So that's how we're going to get around having to pile on this extra work to existing people.
Okay. Thank you.
May I add to that? All of that, well, most of that goes back to the earlier topic, the risk assessment teams, the mental health coordinators responsible under law, and this is a, Ed might want to comment on this, this is a touchy place to me in the new law, is responsible for when those students who pose a threat to themselves or a potential threat to themselves or others are identified, of ensuring, and that's the word they're using in the statute, that all of the wraparound services that are available are administered. And so to your question and to your point, yes, it's a lot of work for people that already have busy, full-time jobs, and so that's why.
Well, and to ensure that people in other agencies are providing wraparound services seems close to impossible. I mean.
And frankly, it's the same with Dwayne. He was already busy before the new training and other things came across.
And those really are just grants, right? And that's one-time money, but these would potentially be positions that you would need for quite some time.
Correct. So the 45 roughly million that was attached to security in this last legislative session, it's in different buckets. Some of it's in school construction money, some of it goes directly to the center so that they can have their own capacity to meet needs. One of the funds, the Safe Schools Fund, is designated in future years to have, to be refunded without additional future legislative action. The others aren't necessarily going to repeat. That's where this grant money that Steve, Mr. Johnson's talking about is coming from. And so we're hopeful that we could reapply in future years and sustain these folks. But that's an if. But it is at least the one fund that may, that would likely have money available. It would just be probably a grant reapplication each year as opposed to being able to bank on it.
I have a question.
Thank you.
I don't know if you can answer this, Ms. Williams, but the 26 officers, what do they do in the summertime?
I was thinking that.
Well, part of that would be training. And that's what they'll, on professional development days, they'll train, just like our teachers train, just differently. They'll go and go to different training classes, go to the range, so forth. During the summertime, they, if they're not assigned to assist with certain types of school, maybe assessments and so forth, working with a principal and refining their critical incident plans and so on, they're going to be assigned to other duties, which maybe might not be so glamorous. They might be carnivals, they might be the Fourth of July details and so forth. So they would supplement the sheriff's manpower during the summertime. And that's up to him, how he assigns them. I don't want to, but traditionally, that is how that looks, and traditionally, and that is the feedback that I have received from the commanders over there thus far. So typically, summertime is also when they're short on manpower due to vacations, so it helps him to backfill some of those without having to pay overtime.
Okay, so you were able to answer that question. Thank you. Board members, any other questions?
Thank you very much. But we are going to have you back up here, I think, when we get to the MOU.
Don't get too comfortable. So moving on to, sorry, I lost my clothes. Yeah. A presentation for Striving Readers Comprehensive Literacy Grant.
So we'll call Dr. Margaret Pfapp to the podium to share an exciting grant opportunity for Carroll County Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Lockard. Good evening, board members. Yes, this is a very exciting opportunity that's been provided to us. So it is my pleasure tonight, along with several colleagues, to share with you the highlights of the Striving Readers Comprehensive Literacy Grant, or what's become known as the SRCL, which has been recently awarded to our school system. This project, obviously, anything of this magnitude has to be a team effort. And as you can see on the screen there, I've listed the names of the design team members. Pam Myers, our early childhood supervisor, Stephanie Dale, elementary LEA, Brian Weinhold, our secondary ELA, and Laura Doolin, our coordinator of secondary ELA, Pam Mesta, Esol, and myself, along with, we also work very closely with Nick Shockney in special ed, and this is Diane Giannacini in special ed as well. And those members are here with us this evening, and some will be sharing highlights of the grant in a moment. Along with the design team who are here this evening, I also want to recognize Karen McFaul, who is the executive director of the Carroll Childcare and Learning Center, and Dorothy Stoltz, who is director. Dorothy is here with us this evening as well, who's director of the Community Engagement for the Carroll County Public Library. And we thank both of those ladies for joining us this evening and supporting this exciting project. I was told I have to turn this on, but I'm not, I've never had to turn it on. Is it on? Oh, you did. Okay, thank you. Let me start with just a few quick details to give you some of the background of this grant. This is money that started at the national level with the U.S. Department of Education. It's what we call pass-through money that is awarded to a state, and then the state distributes it in a variety of ways. MSDE received $45 million from the U.S. Department of Education solely for the purpose of improving literacy throughout the state. So they set up the grant program to allow each school district, each LEA, to apply and submit an application for funds that was not competitive. We knew we would get something, we just didn't know how much. We happened to submit a grant for the total of $1,513,186, which we felt was incredibly substantial, and we crossed our fingers, hoped for the best, not knowing if it was going to be fully funded or not. One of the challenges, as we set up the budget, as you can see up there, the monies had to be divided evenly over the span of three years. And if you look at the dates up there, you may be wondering how the math works out because that's not three years. The timing is a little different than most. The state actually received the money in September of 2017, which officially began the grant cycle. The local school systems were not awarded any funding until June 2018. So the state is aware that even though we wrote the grant for a three-year period, the first year is only about four months long, and so there will be opportunity to carry over. So we still will, of course, be able to fully fund and spend, follow through with our plans. In addition to spending the money evenly over the course of three years, we also had to set up a budget in the proportions that you see there. So birth to five could only, we could only allocate 15% of the total funds, K to five, 40%, grade six through eight, 20, and nine through 12, 20. And again, within those proportions, it also had to be spent evenly over the course of the three years. So the budgeting required a great deal of collaboration and teamwork in order to make the numbers work out for us. Brenda? Am I on now? Are you? Okay. The funding priorities that you see up there were given to applications that included one or more of those specific priorities. The project or the application had to clearly align to at least one. And at the time, we were writing the grant in February, March, April of this current, for this past school year. And at that time, the CCPS strategic plan, as you recall, was still in draft form. But we were able to use it to help guide and direct the work that we needed to do. But as a result of having that resource available and the needs assessment that we did along with that, we were able to align our project to all of those priorities, which I think was probably an advantage for us in the review stage. So our focus for the grant, the statement that you see there, is a direct quote from the project abstract that was included in the grant, and it provides a very simple summary of the overall focus of the grant. Now that the pillars of the strategic plan have been officially set and approved, you can see that there's a very clear and direct alignment between the project that we submitted and pillar one, which in part addresses the literacy development of our youngest learners. And it also sets an expectation that we improve the percentage of students scoring at a proficient level on the Maryland Comprehensive Assessment Program for ELA, for all of our students, as we continue to narrow the achievement gap. And so that is clearly the focus of the project. As we work through this process, there were several planning considerations. As you can see there, the impact, the alignment, and sustainability were three things that throughout this planning process, we had to consider very carefully. The impact, first of all, was based on a very comprehensive needs assessment that obviously included a review of all our data, along with a literacy survey that was sent out to all teachers. But we knew that we needed, we knew that we needed to make decisions based on what would have the greatest impact on all students while also addressing the needs of our disadvantaged students. So that was the theme that ran through our planning process. In addition to that, alignment was also critically important to us. We wanted to make sure that as we, as our plans evolved, that we would strengthen the vertical alignment of our ELA pre-K through 12 curriculum. And I think, as you'll hear in a little bit, we will be able to accomplish that. And then finally, the sustainability was also a critical piece. We had to make sure that anything that we put in the grant, we would be able to sustain once the grant went away, because we know, you know, that there could be budgeting issues and so forth. So that provided some restrictions, but we were able to work through that pretty well. And so based on all of that, the grant includes the five objectives that you see there. Again, after a very careful needs assessment and a great deal of teamwork and planning and brainstorming and so forth, we did establish these five objectives that we are addressing through the grant. And as you can see very clearly, there is a very, very strong alignment to our strategic plan throughout. The emphasis is on our underserved populations, targeted interventions, early learning, professional development, and curriculum alignment. Within the grant, along with these objectives, there are also milestones which set very clear benchmarks and measures, targeted measures, to which we will have to report quarterly to the state as they monitor your progress throughout the life of the grant. And so we'll continue, in fact, I submitted the first report today. One month into the project, we submitted our first interim report. But they, you know, the targets that are set in the grant, we will closely monitor, and then, of course, we report that to the state. But each objective includes those milestones and then includes the strategies that we're going to put in place to help us meet those objectives. So to spotlight a little bit on those strategies, we're going to start with our birth to five component, and Pam Myers is going to share that with you.
Thank you. Good evening, board members. Dr. Lockard? Checking the color. Okay. For the birth to five, we just want to highlight that children's oral language and early literacy development is serving as the foundation for later reading abilities and comprehending more complex text in their future years. Our opportunities that we've developed, we have collaborative efforts that are going to provide opportunities for all of our young children under the age of five to access resources that are needed for literacy success in the schools. The birth to five key initiatives are aligned to pillar two of the Carroll County Public Schools strategic plan. It includes intentional outreach and plans to strengthen productive family and community partnerships. We have three really main areas that we're partnering with. We have our childcare home providers, and we have our Carroll County Public Library, and then we also have our teachers in our pre-K classrooms. In year one, we are providing something to our childcares and home providers called Ready Rosie, which is an app that has modeled moments of how to help your child learn in your home, and those will be available both in English and Spanish for our families. With the Carroll County Public Library, we have play and learn centers within each of our libraries, so any family in our community can access them. We're going to be purchasing and providing funds for them to enhance their centers within their space for, again, all of our children, birth to five. And then we also partner with the library to do storytimes, which we have ones that we schedule in the fall for birth to three families, and then we have ones in the spring which are four-year-olds, getting them ready for kindergarten. And we have county employees partner with the librarians to co-collaborate and plan those and implement those with our families. And again, all of the focus will be on literacy for that as well. And then within our Carroll County Public Schools, we have our 19 pre-K classrooms, and we are purchasing materials to enhance our stations, and we're aligning our stations to our science curriculum to enhance, again, the literacy opportunities within those classrooms. And in addition, we're purchasing classroom libraries, which has a focus on cultural and linguistic relevant text. So our media specialists are actually helping to select those texts so we can provide those in our classrooms, so kids have access to more diversity in the books that are in their space. And then in years two and three, they're very similar in that we're going to continue to partner with our childcare and home providers. We're going to do this through Storytime Express, which is like the old Bookmobile, but they have but they have much more enhanced materials, and these will be available to go out into the community for, again, providers and families to experience. With our county public library, we are going to enhance the make and learn kits, which are actually provided on the Storytime Express, and that's through their outreach department. And again, we'll continue with our storytimes. And then our last initiative with our Carroll County Public Schools staffing, we're going to be aligning curriculum that we'll be purchasing and professional development for the World of Wonders, which is the pre-K wonders that'll backward map what you'll hear in a little bit. And we're going to actually start with our special ed classrooms and look at our ESOL learners and plan for how those curriculum materials will be accommodating for those needs. And I'm excited that we're going to start with them, and then we're going to build that backwards into our general ed classroom. So we've already got those accommodations in place. And then basically, I just wanted to summarize by thanking, again, our early childhood partners with the library and the childcare and home providers, as well as our families within our community. Together, we are supporting student learning and enhancing student achievement. I think I need to introduce, sorry, we didn't practice that part. Stephanie Dale is next.
Good evening, Dr. Lockard, board members. So for elementary K through five, we do have three initiatives related to the grant. And the first one is really to continue what we've been doing with our systematic explicit phonics instruction for many years now. Just to give you a little bit of background, our data is really showing, and has been for some years now, that our students in K, our students in grade one, and even through grade two, our phonics data, our basic phonics data, I should say, is, all of our students are meeting those standards at 90 to 100% for the entire system. Where we're seeing a little bit of discrepancy in the data is when we get into the second and the third grade classrooms, because there's higher level phonics happening, they're dealing with multi-solethic words, the texts are getting more complicated. So it's really time for us to create a core team, an in-house team. At this point, we do use the Wilson and the Foundations Program, which Foundations is under Wilson, and we provide those for tier ones, two, and three intervention and instruction. But what's happening is every time we want to bring people in, we have to rely on Wilson. We really have become experts, so what we're doing is continuing that by having a team of 10 people. And what is nice about this team is we have special ed representation, we have Title One representation, we have ELA specialist representation, and what we're going to do is basically grow in-house, more in-house experts, so that when our teachers, and it really is about providing that professional development to our teachers, especially at the higher levels, because it's difficult, and it really is a very specific body of knowledge that they need and strategies. We will have one actual, Diane Janicini, she's our special ed coordinator. She has been receiving training for many years now. She truly is our county expert. She is now getting additional training to be a trainer for our trainers. And then with that, too, we also have for foundations, people that are going to get foundations certified so that they can give our county PD. And also Wilson, we have a few who are going to be doing the, also the Wilson, which is our tier three. So that's a group of 10. What we want to make, with that group of people, not only are we going to be able to, if you look at that last bullet, provide tier one, tier two, and tier three phonics instruction and interventions with fidelity, but also those experts will be able to sit with us at the curriculum table and deal with our second and third grade data where we obviously, because we've seen this for several years now, need to beef up our curriculum and our PD for our higher level phonics instruction, because we know that that certainly is going to help them to be better comprehenders, better writers down the road. So that's our first initiative. And our second initiative really deals with comprehension and writing instruction. Despite all of our efforts, we are still seeing about 25% of our students at that level three for Park ELA. When we look at our local data, there's an alignment. You know, we can see that the better that they do in our CBA and our SRI, the better they're going to do in Park. Our curriculum is aligned, it's to the standards. But what's missing, I think, is the same thing that was missing with phonics years ago. Our teachers need more strategies in the classroom. It gets down to the teacher level and the teacher being comfortable teaching those comprehension strategies, which of course is also going to affect writing. So we have a three-year plan, and at the end of those three years, we will have all second through fifth grade teachers in all content areas, because that's another piece that we know we really are going to have to address. How are we dealing with reading comprehension and writing in science? The notice and note is actually, there are two texts, one that deals with fiction, one deals with nonfiction, written by experts in the field, because what we are going to do at the county level as well as the building level is have our STEM teachers sitting alongside our ELA teachers and our math teachers and our social studies teachers, so that we can all make sure that we're doing everything that we need to do to prepare our kids, so that when they get to Park, they're going to be, we're going to have more levels, four and five. Along with that, as we are developing our teacher capacity for teaching comprehension, we are going to be developing writing portfolios, something that we've wanted to do for a long time. What will be in there are the notice and note strategies that the teachers are going to be learning about. Our county rubrics will be in there as well. And we will have tabs that deal with every content area. So again, we can all visibly see that reading and writing is all of our jobs, and we can have those student samples related to our rubrics, so that we can have a more comprehensive plan with the content areas. The third initiative, and before I introduce Mr. Weinhold, the third initiative really deals with access to technology. And because Mr. Weinhold and I have the same goal, I'm just going to let him talk about that. But the one thing I will say is that by the end of the three years, every school will have, every elementary school will have 30 laptops dedicated to ELA, which we desperately need. Our kids need to be accessing the technology to be able to do what we're requiring them to do in Park.
Thank you, Ms. Dale.
Good evening. A little bit of deja vu for me. I think we were just talking about ELA not too long ago. For our initiative, we really wanted to focus on, okay. For our initiative, we really wanted to focus on serving our underpopulations, especially the FARMs group, being reactive to our data, which still shows us that writing is an area of improvement that students need. And so basically, our first initiative was to purchase a program called Revision Assistant. It is produced by Turnitin, which is a program we've used for years. And what students will do is they will read texts that model Park, they'll respond to a prompt, but the difference is that they'll submit drafts on the same prompt and receive immediate feedback about how to improve those drafts. Now, the typical student that uses the program revises up to eight times before that essay response meets the standard. So we will be able to have students writing a lot more, receiving quality feedback, both at the whole essay level and the sentence level, without the teacher having to grade those individually. So this will be an add-on to the writing assignments that we already have. So we anticipate that it will greatly improve performance in our FARM subgroup, special education subgroup, and also across the board for all students. Teachers, in addition to that, and that's okay, teachers also get formative feedback about how students are doing instantly, so they can track student improvement, they can coach and discuss with students areas of targeted need throughout the year. Our second initiative really was designed to begin to eliminate the gap in performance between middle school and high school. And we noticed that we, even though writing was in our curricula in secondary, we never targeted writing specifically to prepare students to handle analytical prompts, which is a higher level of writing that Park demands. So we have a three-year rollout for our curriculum writing. Grades eight and nine were this summer, we've already written those lessons. They were teams of high school and middle school teachers at those levels working together. That will be introduced in the fall. That focused on close reading strategies, as well as narrative writing and literary analysis, which are two areas that we have not focused on as much as we have for informational text. Next year, grades seven and 10 will be the teams. They'll follow the same model for eight and nine. They will have basically the same focus. The difference will be in year three, when we get to grades six and 11. 11th grade, since it is not a Park year, will focus on writing strategies around research, strengthening those skills for the real world in college. Our last initiative really was to buy laptops. Frankly, we do not have enough. We've discussed that need before. Thankfully for this grant, we will be able to provide three mobile carts for each middle school and high school by the end of the grant. We have currently already ordered the first round, we'll be able to order the second round after September 30. Schools are excited to get those. Improving keyboarding skills is a must. We have never really been able to have a class for keyboarding fit into students' schedules, but we know at the high school level, especially since students use keyboarding and submit their work electronically so much, having that chance to do that, even without formal keyboarding instruction, should have a big impact. They're tested digitally, electronically, and so now we'll have some additional hardware to support that in the classroom. So in middle schools, typically, that will look like one laptop cart, portable cart, dedicated to each grade level. And in high school, they'll be used as they're needed.
So in closing, I just wanted to kind of bring all the pieces together to reinforce the common threads that hopefully you heard throughout. You know, obviously, there's an incredibly heavy emphasis on curriculum, curriculum alignment, curriculum revisions and upgrades and so forth, including the universal design learning principles and the vertical alignment piece, certainly an emphasis on assessment and instruction. But all of that is certainly not going to happen effectively or with the quality we want unless we have the professional development to go along with it. And so, again, included in the grant is a great deal of funding support to provide our teachers with the professional development they're going to need to implement, you know, the initiatives that you heard about this evening. So again, we're very excited. We were quite surprised when we got the announcement that we were fully funded, so that was a great way to start the summer for us.
Ms. Vigney.
If I wouldn't get in trouble, I would totally be giving you a standing ovation right now. This is so amazing in so many different ways. I love the Revision Assistant with the immediate feedback and the formative assessments, and I can't imagine, like, that is so amazing for the teachers to not have to be involved in the aid draft, but the kids to still get what they need. To me, this is a grant about equity. I mean, it's like, you guys did such a good job, and I'm so excited about this grant. I love that this is totally aligned with our strategic plan and with our pillars, and then it's focusing on some populations of students that have not maybe gotten all that they need. I love, of course, the coordination with our public library and our other agencies, which I know the library is such a good friend to us and such a good partner to us. I can't, like, diversity in the classroom libraries, like, I mean, this, come on, this is like our dream's happening. I love it. The professional development piece, which I know we have totally pretty much taken away any outsourced professional development with the budget, and I know how valuable and important this is, and I'm just so thrilled. I mean, this, I can't, this is just like amazing. So the one question I have, and I guess it's more of a request, is how will you be measuring how successful these initiatives are, and can you bring them back to the board? And just mostly because I'm so excited, I'm losing my mind, and this is, like, this is just so, I know, I've been a little hard on middle school ELA, I know, but this is so cool, and I feel like our kids are going to just benefit from this so much, and thank you so much for the amount of work you have put in to do in this grant.
It really, I have to say, it was a labor of love for this team. I mean, they were amazing. Steve referred to the war room that we affectionately named or set up in Pam Estes' office. And I mean, the commitment that was made, the dedication, the, just the desire and drive to look for ways to support our students that, above and beyond what we're currently doing. I mean, that initially was a challenge. It was. We had to, what can we do that we aren't currently doing that we can sustain?
Right.
And that sustainability was really, really a challenge initially, but, you know, we worked through it. To your question regarding the measures, all of the objectives that are in the grant, the five objectives that I shared earlier, written into the grant are very specific, measurable targets that obviously are based on the same data that we collect to measure, you know, all of our achievement points. So absolutely, it'll be, I don't want to say easy, but certainly the data will be available and we'll be monitoring it, just as we do for all the many other purposes that we monitor data. So it'll just be one more piece that we will provide with the data dashboard, and as we continue to monitor the progress towards our pillars, our strategic plan, it'll all be, it's all connected.
This is amazing. I'm so excited. Thank you guys so much. It's really great.
You're welcome.
Ms. Vigney.
I just want to echo a lot of those comments. A $1.5 million grant, well done. That is just excellent. And I am very excited about the planning considerations, like, the way the impact alignment and sustainability. I think those are absolutely spot on with what we need to do as an organization. And I love the way that the objectives are worded. They are in complete alignment with the strategic plan, and I'm really glad to hear that the targets are available. I think we would love to see those, because I think we should build them directly into the strategic plan. I mean, if we know how we think we can improve our ELA performance for our students through this program, then we should have those targets directly in the strategic plan. So I think
That can be done.
This is fantastic on so many different levels, and I am very excited about it as well. I'm not sure my excitement comes across quite as well.
No, I'm like, there's a way, like, raise the roof, like, standing ovation type of level here.
The one question that I did have was, I was just curious about the breakout. So $1.5 million, we're talking about three carts per school. It sounds like that's probably on the vicinity of about 1,500 laptops, so that might be half of the grant money? Is that? I'm just curious, what proportion of the
What proportion? That's a good question off the top of my head. I don't think it's half. It's certainly a substantial chunk. Sadly, in one aspect, at the elementary level, they will only be getting one set, as Stephanie mentioned. Again, everything had to be proportionate. And so while we were able to provide, you know, more laptops at the secondary level, because we have fewer schools, that, of course, decreased the numbers that we could provide at the elementary level. But it's still
It's a start.
It's still a good start, yeah.
Absolutely.
Absolutely.
Board members, any other questions?
I just want to add, I mean, this is all fantastic, and there's no way I'm going to be able to top that. I'm not going to even try. But, you know, as you mentioned, the partnerships with the library system that we've enjoyed for many, many years, you know, it had helped improve my son's reading dramatically. He's not a comfortable reader, especially the reading with paws, where they read to dogs to build their confidence. You know, even as an adult, I would love to sit there and pet the dog when my son read. I mean, it was
Well, we can't do the work that we do without those partnerships. It's that simple.
No, I agree.
Yep.
But thank you. It was an incredible presentation.
Thank you.
And thank everyone for coming out and speaking. So moving on to citizen participation. Ms. Vigney.
Before I read the guidelines, can I ask Ms. Lucido, do we have any blue cards?
We don't have any.
We don't have any blue cards. Should I still read the citizen participation?
Is there anybody in the audience that would like to speak today?
No.
No, no, I'm sorry, staff is excluded. Well, no, you don't have to read. So let's move on to employee groups.
CCEA has no report tonight.
Oh.
You can handle it.
Nobody wants to speak to us. Oh. Ms. Deal, yes, she would like to speak to us tonight.
Good evening, Dr. Lockard and board members. My name is Diane Deal, and I am the president of CASE, representing Secretary Clerical, LPNs, and Instructional Assistance. Dr. Lockard, I want to thank you for taking the time to meet with us today. You made it apparent during our meeting that you value the hard work of support staff. That is greatly appreciated. Only 25 days into your new position, and you already are making a mark on our school system with your candor and transparency. We are looking forward to continued meetings throughout the school year. CASE hopes that yourself, along with the board members, find some time to relax before the school year starts. Thank you again. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Deal. We're just moving on today.
We still have two pages of the agenda left, so we're not that far.
We're doing well, we're doing well. So, moving on to discussion. Need a motion for the-
No, we don't need a motion.
No, we don't need a motion, okay. Proposed revisions to board policy JLF, child abuse neglect.
Thank you, President Lord. Board members, we're bringing for discussion proposed revisions to policy JLF. Last year, you hired independent counsel to review our existing child abuse policies and make recommendations for improvement. In addition, the General Assembly passed a new law that made related changes to the definitions and training requirements. So, these revisions incorporate both of those pieces. We've also brought the administrative regulations for your information as well, and they're in their packets. The policy will be released for public comment and returned to you in September for decision. And I have staff available, Ms. Baptist, for any questions you may have.
Ms. Vigney?
As you stated, Dr. Lockard, Judy Bresler was the one who had provided the review and the comments, and I just wanted to understand whether she had taken a look at the revisions that we had made, to make sure that we had appropriately incorporated all of the comments that she made.
So, we took Ms. Bresler's comments and incorporated them into our revision of policy JLF. We can present the finalized policy or the review, once we've presented it to you as a board, we can present it to her for review again, if you would like.
I think that makes sense.
I think that's a good idea.
I think that would be a good idea.
Ms. Rothschild?
I was just going to say, I'm really happy to see these changes. I think Ms. Bresler did a really good job of going through our policies, talking to a lot of staff, and, you know, saying we were in a really good spot, but there were still a few tweaks. So, I'm happy to see these coming back to us, and I think that's a great idea, Donna, to have Ms. Bresler just check it out and make sure.
Yeah, I'd like to echo. I think she did an incredible job-
Yes, she did.
-going through everything, and really, you know, her comments were about modernizing a lot of these policies and administrative regulations. And, you know, I'm happy to hear that we are, you know, on top of things, you know, and that the changes are just a matter of modernization. Board members, any other questions, statements?
No.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Can I just ask one other question on that? I think in the administrative regulations, it looks like we, most of the references in here are to the abuse neglect piece, but they haven't been, they haven't added the misconduct piece. So, I'm not sure if the wording needs to-
On my copy, it has sexual misconduct. I'll make sure that the administrative staff has a most recent copy.
Okay. Well, I mean, within the body of a lot of the descriptions, it says abuse and neglect, abuse and neglect, it doesn't have the-
I see it on there, but, I see it on this copy here, it still has the terminology abuse, but whereas on my copy, it has misconduct.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Baptist. And moving on to the proposed comprehensive maintenance plan for educational facilities.
Okay, board members, we're bringing for discussion the proposed annual comprehensive maintenance plan. The state requires each local board to approve a plan annually. It's then submitted to the state public school construction program. The plan's submitted for discussion here today, and will return in September for approval. So, we also have staff available for discussion on that.
I'm just still waiting for someone to do this checklist for my house, for me, you know, like, an annual thing.
Every year, I wish I could put something together so I can do maintenance on my own home in a timely fashion. Ms. Vigney?
I'm sorry, you know I have a lot of questions, right?
I just assume you want to have a standing ovation and raise the roof.
Yes.
Well done, well done.
Yeah, I was just thinking, did Ray make a joke? He did, didn't he?
Well done. I had noticed a couple of things as I was looking at a comparison to last year's document. In last year's, we had kept the running facilities inventory, and I don't, I didn't see that in this document this year, where we have the facilities inventory, where it's the list of all the 40 buildings and-
We, I have to check to see if we had it last year. I know it's not in there this year. So, are you-
So, it is not intended to be in here?
Yeah, are you talking about from the facilities master plan, the inventory list?
Yes.
Okay. If we included it, it would just have been as reference back to that document. We may have removed it so we wouldn't have it into approved documents, and just had it in the one, but-
Okay.
So, there was, I don't know if there was a conscious effort, I'd have to check back with staff on that.
Okay. And I noticed that the assessed value of the assets went up dramatically from last year. It was about a 17% increase or $140 million. I was just trying to understand what was driving that number.
We had the same question. So, we asked Mabe about that. We received that information from Mabe. It's a calculation they make in terms of the replacement value. They just told us it was their calculation, they do it every two years, so it's over a two-year timeframe that that increase has occurred. So, they'll be recalculating again this coming year, I suppose. And we had the same question, they told us that was their calculation, they didn't have anything specific that they pointed to.
Okay, so that's not necessarily a number, then, that's tied to our FCI score that we're going to be calculating?
No.
Okay, okay.
That's replacement cost.
That's the replacement cost as calculated by our insurance carrier.
Okay. Yeah, I discovered that with purchasing a home, that the replacement cost outweighs even what the home is sets for.
And I did have a question of how it relates to the SROs, because I did notice in the MOU that it says, we need to require, we need to provide space, adequate space and facilities and things like that. Would that have any impact on this particular plan, the need to provide that kind of space for the SRO?
Mr. Williams and Ms. Dolch have been meeting with the principals, and they're striving to find spaces in the existing school that they can reutilize without doing much renovation. And at this point, that's, as far as we know, they've been capable of doing that. So, we don't anticipate having anything that would need to be reflected in here. We'd have to carry that under a typical project, a maintenance-type project, but it would be relatively small, I would think.
Cheer for him, Donna, like I feel bad now.
So, as it relates to the SROs, I mean, their requirements are going to be a desk, an office, you know, things that we can-
I'm still back at the raising of the roof. As far as I know, yeah.
Going downhill here.
They're going to have a space, the space that they've been reviewing will be adequate and appropriate in the right spot, and their needs are going to be met. I don't know what any of those are from a facility standpoint until they come to me and say, we need to build this or build that. So, at this point, there's been no request to build anything in addition.
And if there became that need, then that would flow through next year's plan?
We'd have to, yeah, we'd have to take a look, generate a work order, create a maintenance project, and if it was needed for this year, we'd have to, you know, we'd have to accommodate, but we'd have to work through that. And it's not unusual for the SROs, it's, there's an awful lot that comes across my desk in terms of modifications that we try to, you know, assess the prioritization of it, and then we try to fit it into the work schedule. So, it wouldn't be that far, that much different from a lot of the other requests that we get.
Mr. Williams, we're not doing any construction for SROs, right?
The most extreme thing we did was remove some cabinets.
Excellent, thank you.
That's what I was assuming, I just wanted to check.
Yeah.
Ms. Harrison?
I was looking at the buildings with the boars and the things that were happening in different high schools, whereas Liberty, which was built in 1980, and there's really nothing here to say they're going to do any repairs to 2025.
If you're looking at the chart A for boiler repairs? Yes, I'd have to, I mean, for that specific question, I'd have to go and find out when the last time an overhaul or repair was made, but that's what you would read from looking at the chart, is that whatever was done was done in a timeframe where it now doesn't need an overhaul in this timeframe. Specifically for boilers, that's what, it was chart A, I think.
With regard to that, like, so an overhaul is different than a total system replacement, so an overhaul would be conducted by our typical maintenance staff?
Depends on the type of boiler, depends on the situation. We might have to call an outside contractor in to perform that work, but that would be contracted through the operator or through the maintenance department. So, depends on the type of system. Some of our folks can do some of the work on some types of the equipment we have, and others, we have to contract out. So, it would be equipment-specific.
Okay, so that wouldn't flow through CIP, and we wouldn't have any funds that we would be getting from the state for any of that type, any of the overhaul type of work?
No, typically no. Typically no.
So, Liberty recently had some work done to it?
Again, I'd have to check to see exactly when the last work was done, but I can get that back to you.
Thank you.
Board members, any other questions for Mr. Propel?
I just have much more respect for him now. I'm on the record saying that.
I'm not sure what the fuck.
And moving on to the proposed memorandum of understanding with the Carroll County Sheriff's Office on the School Resource Officer Program. Mr. Williams wants to join us.
Okay, and I'll sort of help to tee things up here.
He wants to join us?
I'm just hoping that some of that mojo that Mr. Procop had might be shown our way a little bit. Haven't felt a whole lot of love lately.
Well, I will tell you, I, no, you have received a lot of praise for this document, the SRO and the school administration document, and I think that it has been, it really has helped me, you know, I was, I had a little bit, yeah, totally, like, I am, I'm just, I know that this probably-
How about from Ms. Dolch?
Well, Pam knows that I love her, I mean, she, I don't have to say that, but, I mean, I think that this and the frequently asked questions are going to be very helpful to the community, and I think it has been very helpful to us. So, I'm still going to ask you a whole bunch of questions, but I do appreciate your effort.
I would definitely like to echo those comments, so we'll give you the, I think both Ms. Rothschild and I were a little uncomfortable over the last couple of months, because this was going at such a quick pace, and there were so many unanswered questions, and I think that the document that you've put together outlining the roles and responsibilities and how that lines up with school administration was incredibly helpful, so.
Okay, so, is it okay for me to-
Of course.
-tee a few things up here? So, as you're aware, we're bringing this discussion for the proposed MOU for the SRO program. We would like to thank our staff, raise the roof for those folks. I got to get in on that, right?
Yeah, absolutely.
You're setting a bad precedent. Every department is going to come here and speak to you.
That's right. Can't leave anybody out of that. Thank our staff, the sheriff and his command on preparing this draft for your review. In addition, we've had support from legal counsel, both for the sheriff's office as well as Mr. O'Neill, he's with us tonight. They've worked hard on the MOU and have given their legal advice and approval. The MOU, which is modeled from other Maryland county programs, provides the legal structure for the SRO program. The Safe to Learn Act also requires us to post on our website the roles and authority of the SRO. That will be posted with the new school year. While it's not part of the MOU, it is a plain language explanation of how the SRO and school administrators interact and work together. As we've said, Mr. Williams and other staff have worked hard to produce this document as well as FAQ, and so we thought it really clarified the meaning of the MOU well, presenting it as part of the conversation, your discussion this evening. At whatever point your questions are answered and clarification is provided, I'd be prepared to sign the MOU on behalf of the board. We have those staff members here, as you know, that are available for this conversation.
Board members, okay, Ms. Rothschild?
All right. There's really not that many questions, there's just a few. I think my biggest, I have two, I think, areas that I just need clarification, and I think once they're clear, like, it will be fine. I just, the main one is, what is the process for CCPS to make a complaint or request removal if there's an SRO officer that's just not working on, that maybe he's just not good with middle school kids or whatever? Because in here, it very clearly says that, and I understand that, they're not our employees, but it says personnel issues pertaining to an SRO shall be handled solely by the CCSO. So, I want to know what process is in place for us to deal with complaints.
Right, and we talk about that a little bit in 2.9 of the MOU, and that talks about if there is a concern that it is to be expressed, I'm sorry, that's probably 2.8 that I'm referring to. They both talk about a concern about either a school administrator or vice versa, or an SRO. And so, the normal process would be for that complaint to be voiced to me, and then I would express that through the chain of command for the school resource officers, through their supervisors, or their division commander. Ultimately, it could go up to Major Hart or wherever it might be. I can tell you that we have had, and I've said this earlier, an outstanding relationship with the sheriff's office, and I'm extremely confident that the last thing that they want is a problem with this program. They've been very quick to address any concerns that I have ever had in the past with whatever it might be revolving around law enforcement, and with 25 years in law enforcement, I know what cops should be doing. So, we've had a great relationship, it would just be expressed through the chain command just as any other complaint, they would document it on their end and take whatever appropriate action is necessary. I don't think that every incident would rise to the effect that we would, or just every incident would rise to the effect that we would try to remove an SRO from a school. Most of those things are going to be resolved just through the supervisor addressing that, through their informal or formal action on their end.
But so you believe, then, that this process is clear enough to you that if there were an issue, that it would, you would be able to handle it?
I do, and I have the utmost-
And not, I don't mean you would be.
I have the utmost confidence in the sheriff and his command that they would work with us to resolve that as quickly as possible.
Okay. The other thing, and I have talked to Mr. O'Neill about this, and he assures me this will not be a problem, but let's say there's a fight in the cafeteria, which is typically going to be handled, I mean, always would be handled by our administration, and if the SRO happens to be there, what happens? Because we obviously would not want any criminal action. If the fight is to the point where that's, all that would happen typically would be that a principal would handle it and would undergo our discipline procedures. Is the police officer required to get involved, or will he stay uninvolved? How will that happen? What will happen?
So, there is a balance. So, school administrators function as school administrators and school staff function as school staff, and we would expect, and Ms. Dolch could also speak to that, but we would expect the school administrators to deal with those types of problems as they would in any other situation, and the SROs understand that. Not every crime that occurs in a school, as you well know, requires law enforcement action, and the general parameters that we are working under is if, they would typically call for a law enforcement response for an incident, so if there was no SRO in a school, and they would pick up the phone and dial 911, then those are typically the times when the SRO would be involved. Now, if there's a situation where there's an SRO around and there is no one else around, I'm sure the SRO will tell the students to stop. 99, well, I probably don't want to go there, but the vast majority of the time, an administrator or a staff member telling students to stop, they stop. It doesn't require any physical intervention, and that's the last thing that any staff member for CCPS or school administrator wants to do, is put their hands on a student to break up a fight. The first step is to verbally intervene and try to de-escalate it. So, it's very clear, and I will tell you, my experience when law enforcement officers have been in the school- have been in the school, what I've seen is, a lot of times, they are very, very careful to work with the principal, not step, overstep their bounds as, overstep the principal's authority, and we certainly don't want to undermine the principal's authority in the building.
Okay. So, I mean, so a police officer could get involved if they needed to, but that doesn't mean-
That would be extremely rare.
Okay.
That is not, that is not our intent, and that is not the sheriff's intent with this. The intent would be for these types of things to be handled through the normal procedure that school administrators handle through the normal discipline process. Now, if a student, it might be broken up by school administration, maybe a student receives a very severe injury as a result of a fight, we see this occasionally within the schools.
Right.
At that point in time, there might be a law enforcement investigation that could result in charging, but-
But that would be the same whether the SRO is there or not.
Exactly.
That would be a time where we would call an SRO. So, even if, even if an SRO got involved and had to separate something, that doesn't necessarily mean the police officer's going to press charges or do anything like that.
No.
The administration would still handle the discipline?
No. Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Can I just follow up on that, like, so, Mr. Williams, or maybe it's Mr. O'Neal, is it safe to assume that those exact type of situations would be included in the training curriculum that you were talking about for the SROs?
As a matter of fact, I addressed that question in the training I did on Tuesday, you know, and a lot depends upon the severity of the situation. There's a huge difference between a scuffle between fifth graders on the playground and some of the serious brawls that we've seen in high schools across the state. And, you know, absolutely, there have been situations, even in this county, where we have called for law enforcement to get involved to help intervene. Rare, certainly, but, you know, we have to have an understanding that there is a broad range of incidents that could occur, and the training is designed to help them strike the balance that Mr. Williams mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
It's a qualitative issue.
Okay. I just have one more. I think this is probably more for Ms. Dolch, because I don't want you to feel left out over there.
Thank you, I appreciate that very much.
Beautiful opportunity.
Yes, that's right. So, and I think, Dwayne, I think you did a really good job, you know, when we originally were looking at stuff, it said the SROs and it was talking about curriculum, and so I think you've done a really good job of being, like, that's not going to happen, they're not going to be teaching classes, they can come in as guest speakers, so they may serve as guest speaker on subjects related to their expertise if requested by the school. And so, I just want to make sure that this isn't going to take over some of the other opportunity, or some of the other relationships we have with other agencies, like with the Health Department coming in, or the Rape Crisis Center, or the State's Attorney's Office. It's not like we're going to just use the SROs because they're there. Like, we will still engage in the partnerships that we have with all these other agencies.
Exactly, we certainly will, it's just another, they will be there in the building so we have the opportunity to use them, but you're exactly correct, we'll still use all the other agencies in our classrooms.
Okay. I'm good. Thank you, thank you very much.
Ms. Zivigney?
I had many similar questions, so I appreciate all of those answers. The only one that I have left is really, you know, what does this look like on day one? Are we prepared for the first day that we walk into school? Because I know these are very aggressive timelines, and are we prepared, or is there anything that we're worried about not being prepared for on day one of school?
Go ahead, or I can answer, if you want to.
No, Kim and I have been working very closely throughout the summer with the sheriff's office, tag teaming meetings, sometimes attending meetings together, bringing in appropriate staff to assess needs, technology needs on down the line. I believe we are going to be absolutely fine on day one. Worst thing we might have is maybe some furniture delivery from the sheriff's office, they're waiting on some furniture to arrive. That's probably the biggest challenge that we might have. Everything else is moving very smoothly.
And from a communication standpoint, to parents and the community for day one, I mean, I know that we're going to be posting all of this information on the school websites, but that's more of a pull-type of approach, do we have a push-type of approach as well?
Yes, and so Carrie has been working with the sheriff's office PIO, I believe she's also spoken with the county PIO. Kim has been working with her school administrators, as well as the sheriff's office, about a rollout plan. If Kim wants to talk more about that, I don't want to steal her thunder, but she's been working very diligently on that to make sure that we're communicating all the aspects of this, principals' meetings on down the line, so we, obviously, we can't go full forward on a communication plan until we have a signed MOU, and we know that we are definitely moving forward, but there's a plan in place.
Look at that little political push there, that was nice.
Well, I try.
You've also said that you're willing to come back and talk to CAC also.
That's correct. So, it would be a great opportunity for us to bring the, at least the SRO supervisors to CAC with me. Obviously, I'm on the agenda, or at least I was on the agenda for the next CAC meeting, so we will still continue to get that feedback. So, we're trying, from the Security Advisory Council standpoint and the security standpoint in general, to improve our communications with parents, students. We've got, we've got a ways to go, but we're trying.
Well, your presence at CAC was well received, I will say that.
I just have one last, this is easy, though. Obviously, we don't have 40 SROs coming in on day one. Will the adopt a school program still be in place at the schools where the SROs are not?
So, probably not in the terminology of the adopt a school program, but yes, and so-
Law enforcement would be there.
I use the analogy that on day one, and if, I don't know how many schools you drove by on day one last year, but you couldn't sling a dead cat without hitting a police officer.
Right.
That's just analogy, maybe not politically correct, but there was-
You just lost points, you know.
Yeah, right, but there was a police officer at almost every school stopping in, so, you know, that's normal on every given day. He's going to probably fire me.
No, you're not going, you've done a really good job, you're not, you're not going to-
Yeah, there'll be-
Okay, so, I mean, we will still have non-SRO police coverage in our schools?
Correct. There'll be a very robust presence throughout the county, that's probably a better way to put it.
Thank you very much.
No, thank you. I just want to add, you know, the Q and A section, I think, will be extremely beneficial to the public, because these are questions that people come to me all the time to ask, and I try to explain it. So, I think this will be extremely beneficial, being on our website and being in the hands of our community. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Lord, do we need to vote on that in order to get a signed MOU?
Actually, I was getting ready to address that. I do, my understanding is you would like this, and Mr. Williams has pointed this out, that they would like this in place before the beginning of the school year, so I'm asking if board members have an issue with, if we can vote on this now?
Do we need to make a motion?
Yeah.
Probably.
Yeah, we should make a motion.
I make a motion to vote on the memorandum of understanding as we received it.
To allow the superintendent to sign it.
To allow the superintendent to sign it.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ms. Harrison, second by Ms. Rothschild. So, board members, any other discussion, you know? So, I call for the vote, all those in favor of allowing the superintendent to sign the MOU unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Lockard. Okay. So, moving on to the approval of the old line soccer official contract, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Rothschild.
Second.
Second by Ms. Harrison.
Board members, this is the annual contract for officials for our soccer teams, and it's typically approved each year at this time.
So, board members, any questions? I do have a quick question, is there a cost change from last year?
No.
Thank you. If there's no other questions, board members, I call for the vote for the approval of the old line soccer officials contract. That's unanimously, thank you. Need a motion for the approval of the Mid-Atlantic Officials Alliance DBA Champion Officials Group Contract?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Rothschild.
Second.
Second by Ms. Zivigney.
Similarly, this is the annual contract for officials for our football program.
Okay. Board members, any questions? No, I call for the vote, all those in favor, that's unanimously, thank you. Need the approval of the before and after-school childcare leases.
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Ms. Rothschild?
Second.
Second, Ms. Zivigney. Board members, any questions?
I'll just add, each year at this time, we bring the, for your approval, the lease agreements between our school organizations and providers for before and after-childcare. They are typically contracted through the schools' PTA organizations.
Okay. The board members, any questions? So, I, oh, sorry.
I noticed that this is a very similar amount as last year, just wanted to double-check that that is at least break-even cost from our perspective, you know, because we have to keep utilities and staff presence and things like that in the buildings.
Right.
The costs are based on a formula, and the formula's based on the number of students in the license, and it's also based on our square foot cost to operate the schools, maintenance and operations cost. So, there's no, it's break-even from the point of view that per square foot, we charge the number of students, number of participants, and a certain allotted square footage.
Okay.
Whether that actually equates to, probably not.
Okay, and that's a state formula?
It's a formula we developed, actually. It's hard to take a piece of a school for 20 or 30 kids and then take and figure out how to make that. So, we try to take the square footage that they utilize and charge them for that as best we can.
Board members, any other discussion? I call for the vote, all those in favor, approval of the Carroll County before and after-school childcare leases. That's unanimously, moving on. We need a motion for the approval of the Carroll County Health Department contract, vision and hearing screening follow-up.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Rothschild.
Second.
Second by Ms. Harrison. Dr. Lockard.
Right, each year, we approve a contract with the Health Department for a vision and hearing screening of students, usually comes to you in August, as we have done tonight.
Board members, any questions? No? So, with that, I call for the vote, all those in favor approving. Motion passes unanimously. I need a motion for the approval of the Carroll County Curriculum Council membership for 2018, 2019.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Rothschild.
Second.
Second by Ms. Harrison. Dr. Lockard.
Right, well, each of the next six items are the annual appointment of membership for the board's various community advisory councils. In addition to the proposed membership rosters, we'll need one or two board members who wish to serve on each council, and you may wish to take these one at a time, if you'd like.
I am the member for the Carroll County Curriculum Council, and I'd like to remain on the council.
Okay. Board members, are there anybody else that would like to remain or change any of the committees?
I would like to remain on the teachers advisory.
Okay.
And I also would like to remain on the Career and Tech Council.
Okay, so I'm currently on the security advisory, and I'm the alternate for CAC, I would like to remain on those committees as well as take over CAC from Ms. Rothschild.
I'll also make a note that Audit Committee was not in the list of, they don't usually come up for discussion for this part, but that I will be taking over the board membership for that particular committee.
Okay, so in the, are there any other changes to the membership committee? So, in the interest of time, since we don't, I won't have to read every single one of these, can we just lump these all together?
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve all of the memberships for 8E, F, G, H, I, and J.
So moved.
I need a second.
Need a second?
Second.
Thanks.
Okay. So-
So, I do have a question.
Ms. Zivigney?
On the Curriculum Council, I just wanted to make a statement, this is, this is an absolutely massive group, so just trying to understand, you know, is this, can they be effective in that large of a group?
Well, the group represents every school, and we also, students, student representation from each high school, and then that long list of, you know, obviously, staff members, which also makes it look like a very large group. But the purpose, when you think about the purpose of the Curriculum Council as a group, to be informed, to review materials, to provide feedback, it works. We have representation from elementary, middle, and high, and so that, you know, and that's important, obviously, to the process, so it's never seemed too large as far as provide, you know, having the opportunity to provide input and feedback. I use a variety of ways to do that, both written, verbal, and so forth, so everyone has a voice if they choose to do so.
So, you do get good participation from the group?
I think so, I think so.
Now, I know in years past, when, like, health curriculum would always go through the Family Life Group, and so this is very separate from that, though, correct?
It is, yes, there is a committee when needed, there's a Family Life Committee as well, that reviews materials that are specific to the Family Life units K through 12. Other health curricula does come to this committee, however.
Okay.
So, it's just the Family Life that's separate.
Okay.
Board members, any other discussion about these items? So, we have a motion and a second for grouping all the items, 8E through 8J, all the membership committees. So, I call for the vote, all those approving the membership for these. That's unanimously, thank you. So, our next item is the approval of the transfer of the school bus contracts. Dr. Lockard.
Sure, board members, from time to time, our bus contractors have a need to transfer a school bus route from one contractor to another. Those transfers come through Mr. Hardesty's office and are then brought for your approval. So, we have one transfer of the bus contract for your approval this evening in the agenda packet.
We need to make a motion.
Need to make a motion? Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Zivigney, second by Ms. Harrison. Board members, are there any discussion, questions about this? No, so I call for the vote, all those in favor, that's unanimously again. Moving on to instructional reports. First one's a report on the Carroll County Teacher Advisory Council Agenda Topics. Dr. Lockard.
Right, as with each of the next several agenda items here, and then under instructional reports, we're looking at the agenda topics for each of the different advisory councils and committees for your review and questions. I think maybe we could go through one at a time, just as we've started with the Teacher Advisory Council Agenda Topics.
Board members?
I was just going to ask, Mr. Johnson, this is very consistent with the topics that we had put up at the end of the last Teacher Advisory Council meeting, correct?
That's correct. The council does the brainstorming, and then we get it down into a manageable chunk for the two meetings that we have each year.
Okay. And the instructional technology plan, and that was definitely something that we focused on at the end of the prior meeting, and we were talking about how we really want that to be, how are we going to deliver instruction-
Correct.
...through technology, and I'm assuming there's probably going to be, we would want to coordinate with the folks that we heard the presentation from earlier this evening.
Correct. What we hope to do is use this as a point saying, we heard you last year, the importance of having an instructional technology plan, we're going to invite you to be a part of the development of that plan, but it's certainly going to be a larger group than just the Teacher Advisory Council.
Thank you.
Ms. Rothschild?
Are we just, are we talking about all of them? Are we going through one at a time?
One at a time, so I suggest.
One at a time, yeah.
Well, then, never mind.
So, any other discussion on the Teacher Advisory Council topics? No, so let's move on to the Curriculum Council Agenda Topics. We don't need to vote on the instructional reports.
We don't need to- We don't need to.
We don't need to vote.
It's just discussion, right?
It's just discussion. Ms. Sevigny.
So, just trying to understand, so the K-12 Comprehensive Literacy Plan, that is, in fact, the grant that we were talking about earlier, correct?
Yes. One of the parts of the grant submission was a literacy plan that had to be developed. And based on that, or that plan is what helped us create the grant, actually. We had to submit both to the state. We only had to create a draft of the literacy plan, because the timeframe, they knew, was a little, was, you know, not wonderful. And so they, you know, said, as long as you submit a draft, which we did. So it still works in progress, but I wanted to take it to the Curriculum Council and let them have eyes on it, and feedback, and so forth, so that we can continue to grow it.
Yep. And can you help me understand how, you know, so the issues that we had identified in middle school ELA during the work session, and we know that there was a lot of updates and changes made to the curriculum, that's, to align them properly with the standards? We had seen that there was a misalignment between the curriculum and the standards, correct? And so a lot of those changes took place this summer?
Mm-hmm.
Is that, is that still something that this group would be taking a continued look at?
Basically, what we do with Curriculum Council members is provide presentations that generate information, provide information related to curriculum, related to standards. A lot of times, we give them very hands-on experiences, so that they can really dig into the curriculum, so that they have an awareness. And then, based on that, we then generate feedback. You know, we're looking for community standards. We're looking for their voice related to technology, for example. That's a topic that comes up quite frequently. When it comes to specific curricula, such as the ELA, because it is so complex, and there's so many dimensions to it, what we try to provide on a, not annual basis, but every couple of years, are updates to what we have, you know, changes that have been made in the curriculum, and what they can expect to see at their child's school, depending on the level. And then, again, based on that information, we get feedback from them as to what they see, what they're not seeing, and many times, they'll tell us, you know, that's not what we see. And, you know, we, my child struggles with whatever. And so it's that kind of feedback that our supervisors listen to and take back, and then, when they do make revisions, that helps them make sure that they continue to hear that community voice in their work.
Okay.
So, they don't get down in the weeds, I guess, is what I'm trying to say. It's much more global feedback that we get.
Board members, any other discussion on this topic? No? So we're going to move on to the Carroll County Career and Technology Education Local Advisory Council Agenda. Is there any discussion on that? No? So let's move on to the Carroll County Special Education Citizens Advisory Committee. Any discussion on that one? No? So let's move on to the Carroll County Community Advisory Council Agenda. Ms. Rothschild.
I just would like to make sure that we capture in the agenda for upcoming, that we want the CAC to provide feedback on the SRO program, which sounds like they're already scheduled to-
Yes.
Right. And then the other thing is that we had mentioned that CAC providing feedback on the dashboard, the upcoming dashboard.
Yeah, that's right.
So I would just like to include that.
Okay. Ms. Sevigny.
I had heard on several occasions last year that some folks that were worried about the consistency of CAC, of how that information is disseminated back to school communities, how the CAC reps get the information and bring it back to the group, that there seemed to be some inconsistency among the members. And I know that that's part of the CAC discussion. I didn't know if that was something you were planning to specifically address. So I didn't say that very eloquently. Did you understand what I was trying to get at?
Yes. We have traditionally left it up to each individual CAC member and each principal how they want to communicate, take the information, and communicate it out to their school community. At the first meeting, we will address what the expectations of a CAC member are, and the process we want them to use to take the information back to their principal. Also be talking with the principals about what our expectations are for them to help the CAC member get the information out to the school community.
Okay.
Well, I would say, being on CAC, there's been some lively, you know, discussion, and it's been discussed many times, of getting that information back to their community. Some members use completely different strategies. It's really what, how, what works in their own community, their own school. And, you know, the SCADAS has made a great effort to inform the principals of, you know, the expectations of CAC.
Okay.
So-
And I, that's helpful. I mean, I certainly understand giving the CAC members the latitude to use what strategies work best for them and their community, just making sure that we are, we have some sort of way to say, it's actually happening, right? Not that we're just assuming that it's happening.
Research and data.
Okay. Great.
I mean, actually, Carrie's been getting a lot of feedback from the organization itself. What is working for them? Do they like how that information's getting through their own communities? Can they make changes? So it's, but it's good to see, my response to all this, it's good to see they have a, not a large agenda, but they do have topics that will be, have some rich discussion on CAC, because that's what drives CAC. There's nothing to do. They get bored. And we have less people actually show up. So having a rich agenda throughout the year, I think, will bring on lively discussion and keep CAC going well.
And just one other quick comment. I did notice in the, in the membership group, that there were still, I mean, I don't know all employees' names, but I did recognize at least three or four as employees, rather than community representatives. So are we still attempting to fill those with-
We're trying to, I would say, for the principals who are not designated, a parent number, and some of the schools, quite frankly, are struggling to get numbers, and we're working with them to try and get a parent number for each student.
Okay.
Yeah. In fact, in the past, there have been school employees that they are representing their own child's school, which is a completely different facility than they work at. So, I mean, there is a balance there. Okay. Any other discussion on that? No? Let's move on. Where are we?
We're at the end.
Yeah. Unfinished business, new business. Board members, Ms. Sevigny.
I did just want to make a comment under unfinished business with the strategic plan. We had ended our work session last week and said that we were going to plan another work session, which I think is absolutely right. I mean, we need to, sooner rather than later, get a lot of the benchmark data and baseline data in that. And I wanted to understand what the timeline was that we were looking for. We didn't really say, we just said we're going to schedule another work session. We didn't say if it was going to be a month from now, three months from now.
Sure. And so our plan is to come back, and I provided some update in the superintendent update, but our plan is to come back at the September work session, I'm sorry, the, yeah, September work session date, I believe. Didn't we reserve, Mr. Lord, we talked about reserving a work session date each month, so that we'd have it.
On the fourth Wednesday.
Right.
I do believe we have one in there, but we'll double-check.
Teams are hard at work, at working on those measures to bring back to the board for their review. And then we talked about a mock-up of the dashboard in October.
Right.
So, that's our timeline.
Thank you very much.
So, board members, any other new business or unfinished business? No? So, we have a board meeting with citizen participation on September 13th, 2018, in this boardroom, and it starts at 5:00. So I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Sevigny, second by Ms. Harrison. All that, and all those in favor of adjourned. Meeting is now adjourned.